The party part of this is over. Good evening tonight. We're going to start with a roll call.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Here.
Councilmember Keim?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
And tonight, I've asked the chaplain for the yacht club and anybody who'll listen, Jonathan Hoover, to come down and do the invocation for us. Please stand.
Do you want me to do the pledge first? Is that what you're...
No.
No? Okay.
Invocation.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilman Feller, and the rest of the council and mayor for having me this evening. I'll try to be brief, but anybody that knows me, when you put a microphone in front of me, I talk just a little bit. Invocations are kind of a funny thing. Most people get confused by them, and they just go down to a prayer real quick to open the meeting. But I'm going to give you just a couple of words that I hope will invoke a response before you go into the meeting here this evening. So tonight, what I want to impress upon you all is twofold. But I would like you to take just a moment. I know we all are probably coming from work and hustling to get here, find parking. Our phones are blowing up with emails and text messages. Life in Southern California has a way of doing that to us, right? But I'd like you to stop for just a second, and I'd like you to think about the things that we all have to be thankful for in this life. The things that we have to be thankful for living here in the city of Oceanside. I know there's a lot of stress in all of our lives. We have jobs. I have a job. I can attest to stress. Officer Keim's... Former Officer Keim is giving me a look like he understands what stress is now as a council member for the city of Oceanside. But I would like you to just kind of drown out some of that noise for a minute and just humor me in this. When I say what you have to be thankful for, I'm not talking about a bumper sticker on your car, not talking about the word gratitude on your yoga mat. I'm talking about your family. If you take the time to walk in our beautiful beaches, spend any time on, in, and around our beautiful harbor, those types of things. I know we have to acknowledge... Like, I acknowledge that we may have to dig a little bit past some hurt in our lives, past tragedies that we've experienced. There's a lot of negatives around us, but when we get to the core of it, we have an abundance to be grateful for. In Paul's First Letter to the Thessalonians, Chapter 5, Verse 18, he says, "Give thanks in all circumstances, for this is God's will for you in Christ Jesus." Now, you may think that's kind of a neat thing to say, but let's be real. We live in a broken world full of imperfect people. We've all been wronged. There's plenty of room for bitterness and anger, but those things just perpetuate themselves, don't they? So beyond this cliche saying of being grateful in all circumstances despite those stresses and despite those negatives that surround us in our life, how do we apply that? And that's the second thing that I want to talk about. And fortunately for us, the Bible has context, so there's more to that. If we go back to verse 12, we read, "Now we ask you, brothers, to respect those who work hard among you, who are over you in the Lord and who admonish you. Hold them in the highest regard in love because of their work. Live in peace with each other, and we urge you, brothers, warn those who are idle, encourage the timid, help the weak, be patient with everyone. Make sure that nobody pays back wrong for wrong, but always tries to be kind to each other and to everyone else. Be joyful always; pray continually; give thanks in all circumstances, for this is God's will for you in Christ Jesus." Please bow your heads and pray with me. Lord, we come to you this evening with grateful hearts. We thank you for the rich and abundant blessings in our life. We thank you for this beautiful city that we get to call home and all of the gorgeous creation that you have so richly blessed us with. Lord, tonight, we pray for the leaders of our city, our council, our mayor, our city manager, that you would give them wisdom. We pray that you would give us all compassion and strength where we need it to make sound decisions in our city. Help us to see the many blessings in our life, and amidst trials, tribulations, and stress, help us to give thanks in all circumstances, to encourage those around us, and be patient with one another. For as you've taught us, a right mind and right actions perpetuate good in this world. Thank you for your word, the guidance it gives us. Thank you for the leadership in our city. And thank you again for this beautiful place we call home. In your name we pray. Amen.
Would you also lead us in the pledge?
It'd be my pleasure. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Lisa from the Humane Society to bring her cat up. Oh, you said it was going to be a cat.
Yes.
This is the Pet of the Month segment, and I would hope that somebody can go home with this dog tonight. And I'll give it to you, Lisa. Thanks.
Thank you so much. This is Diamond. Diamond is about seven years old. She's a lab pit bull mix. She's been with us at the shelter for a little bit. She's got to check everything out. I'm going to let her check things out a little bit. She is just a really good girl. She's a great walking partner. I was walking around outside with her, and I mean, if I want to go up the stairs one way or another, she follows right along. She's just super easy, and she loves to be with her people. She actually had a little problem called happy tail. You know, when they get excited, and that tail is kind of hitting the wall and things, and causes injury to the tail. She loves meeting people, as you can see. She has lived with other dogs. There was multiple dogs in the home. If she were to go home with another dog, she would need to meet that dog first and see how they were going to get along. Multiple dogs in the home could be an issue, just a lot to manage. So there would be a consultation with our trainer if she were to go home with another dog. Otherwise, she is available for adoption, and she's right down here on the San... At the San Luis Rey location for the San Diego Humane Society. If anybody was interested in, please come in and meet her. I don't think you could go wrong with her if you're looking for that wonderful companion. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is microchipping. We have a clinic, a vaccine clinic, every Wednesday from 10:00 a.m. till 12:00. So we do low-cost vaccinations, and this month, we're doing free microchipping. And microchipping is just a wonderful way to help get your pet back. We see that all the time at the shelter. A dog comes in that... We've even had dogs reclaimed that were missing for seven months or longer, and just due to that microchip, and sometimes even, you know, with miles between their owner and the dog. So microchipping is a wonderful thing. Please, you know, feel free to come in on Wednesdays between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and that's going to be at the Airport Road location. That's at 572 Mission Avenue in Oceanside, every Wednesday from 10:00 to 12:00. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you do microchipping for council members and mayors?
Yes.
Well, Peter's lost right now, so anyway, thank you very much, Lisa. Thank you. With that, I'd like to bring Jerry Kern up with an update on the Santa Inofre engagement panel, and I think he has somebody with him, too. Or maybe he doesn't.
Thank you. But before I begin, Mr. Clark, is there any other speakers on this item?
There are.
There is?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I'll just go ahead and get started, then. Yeah, I set this up with Mayor Weiss, and he said, since he's not going to be here, I can take as long as I want. Is that correct?
Up to nine more minutes.
Okay. Actually, before I begin, if you can indulge me a little bit, one thing I have to mention that I kind of miss when I'm not here is the Friends of Library book sale is this Saturday.
I knew that was coming.
You knew that was coming, because... And I would encourage everybody to come and buy books for a very selfish reason. The more books that you buy on Saturday, the less books I have to haul on Saturday evening. So it saves my back tremendously if everybody comes out and buys books at the book sale. So thank you. My official position here is Secretary of the Community Engagement Panel for the decommissioning of Santa Inofre. And I'm going to try to bring you up to speed a little bit about where we're at on the decommissioning and where we're going. So a couple things. Where's my... All right.
Right here.
Okay. This is one of the... Our principles when we started this, safety, stewardship, and engagement. It's safety for the workers and the local community, stewardship of the trust fund monies that were put in for decommissioning, and engagement with the public through the Community Engagement Panel, which is what I am here for tonight. Go ahead. I really like to thank Scott for helping me with all this stuff here. So this is a brief video. This is on the website, but this is... We'll bring you up somewhat up to speed.
...announced that it would permanently retire its Santa Inofre nuclear plant and begin preparations to decommission the two reactors, Units 2 and 3. Unit 1 was retired in 1992 and is already in the decommissioning process. What does it mean to decommission a nuclear power plant? It means removing and disposing of radioactive components and materials, like the reactor and associated piping. It means cleanup of radioactive or hazardous contamination that may remain in plant buildings and on the site. It also includes placing used fuel into robust and shielded storage containers. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission, also known as the NRC, requires that we follow a specific process and plan. It has strict rules governing all aspects of the process. Everything from managing the radioactive fuel to cleaning up contaminated systems and structures that will be transported to off-site waste facilities. The NRC requires that decommissioning be completed in 60 years, but SCE plans to safely complete this work within 20. Safely complete this work within 20. Our decommissioning roadmap rests on three core principles: safety, stewardship, and engagement. Safety. At SCE, safety and compliance are prerequisites for our work. They are foundational requirements. We are committed to decommissioning Santa Inofre as safely as possible, following these foundational requirements throughout the process as we prepare the station for dismantlement, ensure the safe storage of nuclear fuel, and eventually return the land to the U.S. Navy. The public may have already noticed more industrial trucks and activity around the site. This will only increase as we get closer to when the major dismantlement work begins. All of this will be done following state and federal requirements. A significant part of decommissioning is the management of the plant's nuclear fuel. Santa Inofre currently stores used fuel safely and securely using a combination of technologies: enclosed steel-lined concrete pools filled with water called spent fuel pools, and sealed stainless steel canisters that are housed in reinforced concrete structures. This is called dry cask storage. All remaining nuclear fuel was removed from the Unit 2 and 3 reactors back in 2013 and is safely stored in our spent fuel pools. Over the next several years, we will systematically offload the used fuel into steel-lined concrete dry cask storage containers and safely maintain it until the federal government removes it. Stewardship. For more than 40 years, SCE has been a proud member of this community and its surroundings. We're committed to continuing that relationship and our service to the community. We'll continue to support environmental mitigation and wetlands restoration efforts like the San de Gito Wetlands, the Wheeler North Reef off the coast of San Clemente, and the HUBS Fish Hatchery in Carlsbad. As we dismantle the plant, we will do so in a manner that allows the land to be used for other purposes. The land will be returned to our landlord, the U.S. Navy. Managing the cost of decommissioning Santa Inofre is something SCE takes seriously. Substantial dollars have accumulated in the Nuclear Decommissioning Trust through customer contributions, and there is adequate funding to pay for decommissioning without further contributions. SCE and the co-owners... SCE and the co-owners, with the oversight of the California Public Utilities Commission, will ensure these funds are used wisely and return any unused funds to ratepayers. Engagement. SCE intends to manage the Santa Inofre decommissioning process in an inclusive, forward-thinking, and responsible way. We want to ensure the public understands what is happening at the station and promptly answer any questions. That's one of the reasons why a Community Engagement Panel was established in February 2014. The panel is made up of elected representatives and public servants from the surrounding cities and counties, the military, local environmentalists, business, labor, customer interests, and academia. It holds regular meetings and workshops on decommissioning issues which are open to the public. SCE is also out in the community and readily available to meet with you regarding your questions. We are opening the plant for public walking tours and are conducting decommissioning education fairs in your neighborhoods. To find out what's happening at the station, visit www.songscommunity.com. Working together, we believe we can safely and successfully decommission songs and continue to be good stewards of the environment. We will keep you informed throughout the process and invite you to visit our website frequently for updates.
Thank you, Scott. Whoops. All right. Get back on track here. And if I can have K O C T, just stay on the slides. I think people know what I look like after being on the dais for 12 years, so they don't need to see me. I really like to focus on these slides. At the end of the demo, the decommissioning and decommissioning and demolition, essentially all that's going to be left as songs are the switchyards and spent fuel islands. People remember when Edison... When Steve Genie went down a few years ago, the thing that saved the whole Southern California was going down was where the switchyards at Santa Inofre to isolate it from the Edison system. So that's going to stay in place. So we're going to do that. Plans to decommission the soonest, the 20 years, and if you can see these slides, we're doing the work now. The spent nuclear fuel is both wet and dry cast storage, which was in the video. The fourth blue bar down is... Shows the decommissioning and just decommissioning and destruction. I can't get that right. Will be performed hopefully by 2020 through 2028, all that down. So probably about mid... Next decade, the domes will be gone. The domes will disappear. Also, starting in 2020, all the spent fuel will be passive dry cast storage. So by the middle of next year, hopefully, all the fuel will be in dry cast storage, and all the other right future work will be done and transferred fuel offsite. That's the focus now, is what we're working legislatively with our representative in Washington, is to get that fuel moved offsite to a storage facility. But before they can take the decommissioning get done, there's a few milestones that have to meet. The first step was completed in March. Was California State Lands Commission to certify the environmental impact report, and that was approved. The next step is actually next... Middle of next month, in June, is we're going back before the California Coastal Commission to get the coastal development permit. That's more than likely... I think that meeting's in San Diego next month. And later in 2021, we'll need the community... Coastal Development Permit application approved, and then we can start moving fuel off... We'll be eligible to start moving fuel offsite. Okay. The four-part strategy of used fuel management: safely manage the fuel and store it Santa Fe... Use nuclear fuel until it's removed from the site. We are in the process of doing that now. Promptly offload the fuel from the pools to passive dry storage. We need that fuel in dry storage, so it's ready to go, to be transferred when we ever get something out of Congress that say that we can start moving it to consolidated interim storage. And recover used fuel storage costs from the Department of Energy. You have paid for all of this, and your electric bill over the last 25, 30 years. That money is there already. It's not like they're going to charge you more. The money is there. It's waiting to go. We just need to get it going. So there... Everything is in place to get this moved. And support all safe and reasonable launches to remove the nuclear fuel from Santa Inofre. And we've been working on that for some time now. And I'll do this. Okay, this image at the left shows where we were at the start of 2018. This is how much fuel is out there. There's basically 2,668 fuel assemblies. There was 50 in the canisters from Unit 1. They have 73 canisters plus the 50 existing canisters, and so the total that we have is 123 canisters that we need to move offsite. Each canister weighs about 50 tons. So there's a lot of fuel out there that needs to be moved, and we're working towards doing that. There's two dry cast storage at Songs. One is the Areva system, which was out of Unit 1, and it's the horizontal system. And this one is the new system, the Holtech system, the vertical system. The middle gray stainless steel is how that slides down there, the canister, and there's with 37 fuel assembly rods, and each one lowered down into... It's basically a five-acre pad of concrete, and it... And they're lower down into that, and it's passive cooling. There was an event in August, and this is kind of one of the reasons we've been going around talking about this. On August 3rd, a loaded canister became lodged on a shield ring, and was to be lowered down into the vault. For less than an hour, the canister remained lodged and suspended by the ring. The canister was safely placed in the storage vaults. It was put... They put it back under load and lowered it down. Although unlikely that the canister could have fallen the full 18 feet, the bottom of the storage vault, the canister is designed to withstand a drop of over 25 feet without a breach. There is no radiological threat to the employees or the public. The fuel transfer operations have been suspended pending the completion of the NRC and the Edison review. We're at the point now that most of this is done. We're still waiting for the NRC to give the go-ahead to start moving fuel, and I have really no indication when that is going to happen. Hopefully, soon. Everybody's done quite a bit of work on this, so hopefully, we can get started by sometime in summer of start removing the fuel again. And then, as soon as we do that, we can transfer that, we'll get that stuff safely stored. So here's a picture of what actually happened. The location where the canister was caught, that ring there is when the canister was lowered, it was tilted on that ring, and so it was not under load or under suspension. And so it was... It could have fallen, but it didn't. And this is the used fuel readiness for transport. So right now, we have 29 unit... 29 canisters ready to move, if we had a place to move it to. And then, and by the end of this year, there should be six more. By the end of next year, there should be 67 more. And then, as time goes on, by 2030, the last nine canisters are eligible to move. So what we need is a place to move it to. So the idea of the consolidated interim storage site is where we're working at right now, because Yucca Mountain is on the table, off the table, so having a site to move it to is what we're working for. This is how you can help, not only as the council, but at the people at home and the people in this room. We need to contact members of Congress and urge support legislation to move the spent nuclear fuel offsite. Permanent geologic respository, consolidated interim storage. I personally think, right now, consolidated interim storage is probably the best bet. I think that's the one that wants... There's two sites, one in New Mexico and one in Texas, going through licensing right now. If we can get those licensed, we have a place to put it. What needs to be changed is the Nuclear Waste Act of 1982, which says the Department of Energy will assume control when it goes through permanent storage. Well, that permanent storage site was Yucca Mountain. That has been on the table, off the table, so right now, we need to amend the act. So instead of permanent storage, it could go to consolidated interim storage. And the other thing that we would like to see is that it takes decommissioned sites first. Right now, the Waste Act says it takes the oldest fuel first. So you might have older fuel in a site in Missouri, and then the second oldest is a site in Indiana, the third oldest in Rancho Seco and up by Sacramento. So if we can take the decommissioned sites first, we can get in the line earlier and hopefully get our fuel moved out here as quickly as possible. So if anybody forgets what I said here, and more than likely that they will, go to this website, songscommunity.com. The video I showed you is on that website. If you have questions, you can go to that site, and the frequently asked questions are on that site. And it has the ability, if you have a question, that you can actually ask the question of that through that website, and it'll be answered. So this is the most important thing to remember, and I've given this many times, and so if you can write that down, and so you can actually go to that site and work on it. I'm going to flip through the acquaintance real quick. You know, that's the history of the plant. Here's what they were talking about, the mitigation, that they're going to leave the horizontal waste, the cooling... Where the water came out of the plant, out into the ocean, they're going to leave the horizontal there. The vertical ones, the vertical risers for... They're going to take out. And so this will be an artificial reef. So they're going to leave that in place. And right now, it's been there so long, there's a lot of plant and animals that depend on that as an ecosystem. So they're going to leave that in place. And this is the offshore conduits, and so the vertical ones are going to go, the horizontal ones will stay. Just go through that quickly. So the state agencies that we've gone through, SEQA has been done. The offshore... Shore work's going to be done. So I'm going to kind of, you know, those things. And then used fuel management. This is what a fuel assembly looks like, and there's 37 of them in a thing. This is the ponds that they were talking about, the steel-reinforced cooling ponds, the wet storage, where it moves them out. And this is the sites that we're talking about. The Areva system is the 50 spent fuel canisters. Mostly those are Unit 1. I think there might be some from 2 and 3 in there, but mostly Unit 1. And then the Holtech system is the remaining fuel from 2 and 3. There's the 73 canisters going to be in that one. And this is the... The one on the left is the Areva system, the horizontal system that is in place now. And these are the spent fuel storage sites throughout the United States. So what we're trying to do here is actually going to have nationwide impact. If we can get Congress to move on this and move these fuels out of those sites into consolidated interim storage, a lot of these sites can get their nuclear fuel moved out as well. The downloading event, you know, this kind of... I showed the video, I mean, the animation of it, the picture of it, but this is what that looks like. And so I thank you for your time. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Right now, our next meeting is the 5th of June. I think it's at... In Oceanside, right? QLN?
Yes.
Yeah. So the next meeting, June the 5th, will be at QLN here in Oceanside, if you would like to come. And we're going to talk about the fuel transfer and the issues that we have, and hopefully by that time, we may or may not have an answer from the NRC.
Okay. Any questions? I knew 10 minutes was wrong, but anyway, thank you for your presentation, Jerry. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
No questions but...
Comment? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to also give an update on this. Congressman Mike Levin has created a task force on Songs with the goal of expediting removal of the spent fuel from, you know, from Santa Inofre. In fact, what he's... He's actually put forward some legislation to try to create criteria... In fact, what he's, he's actually put forward some legislation to try to create criteria to prioritize, and especially San Onofre is, has 8.3 million people within 50 miles, and is also within two earthquake faults. So legislation he's proposing is that they be prioritized so that if, you know, to remove those that, or prioritize those that have already been decommissioned or in the process of being decommissioned, pose the greatest threat in terms of populations, and as I just said, $8.3 million, excuse me, 8.3 million people within 50 miles. And then, also a criteria of a greatest environmental risk. And San Onofre should be right on top of that, so that list. So we do have, we did have several people who are appointed. I've been appointed on the, on the task force to represent Oceanside. Also, Peter Lawrence of our Fire Department has been appointed, and Amanda Masha. So three people from Oceanside, and we just met. Mr. Kern was there as well, and so I'm sure you can be, we're going to be interacting in terms of Edison's community engagement panel. And, and we look forward, it's going to be divided into policy and technical. So we are, we do have amongst those that are, that were appointed are folks that have really great skills in terms of, you know, knowledge of nuclear power plants. So very, very excited to represent City of Oceanside on this. And to, instead of waiting till 2050 to, Congressman Levin would like to see the fuel removed by 2035. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and give the closed session report now. The City Council did meet in closed session to discuss two items. The first item was labor negotiations involving the status of negotiations with the Oceanside City Employees Association. Also, unrepresented employees were discussed. The council did discuss that item. There's no reportable action under the Brown Act. The council also meant to discuss a real property item, Item 2A and B. Conference with real property negotiator involving the city parking lots at the southeast corner of Civic Center Drive and Tremont Street, southeast corner of Pierview Way and Tremont Street. Negotiating parties, City of Oceanside and GK Asset Management LLC, under negotiations or price in terms for the use of the real property. Item 2B was also discussing a portion of Parking Lot 26 on Meyer Street at the terminus of Seagate Avenue. Negotiating parties are City of Oceanside and Pelican Communities, under negotiations or price in terms for the use of the property. Both those items were discussed. There's no action under the Brown Act reported at this time.
Thank you. The next, we have consent items, five through, or four, six through 17, is that correct?
17's been pulled by the, a member of the public.
Number seven?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay.
Balance?
I'll second it. Let's hear from...
Motion approved for zero.
Let's hear from the public, please.
Our first speaker is Arlene Hammerschmidt, for item number 17.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Honorable Counsel. I ask that this item be pulled with a discussion in the name of transparency and information available to the public. And I had some questions. I did have an email interchange with Tom. My questions are, what is the current retention schedule for all of these items? What are the changes? Are there new limits regarding when the public can request and get PRRs, Public Request for Information? Are some city retentions longer than the state? Why are they longer than the state requirement? And will the city now be in line with the state requirement regarding emails? I know that previously, the state required emails to be with, to be held on to for a year, and there were some outlying cities, including Oceanside, that were retaining emails for 90 days. So one suggestion would be to have a separate column on this spreadsheet for ease of public information. A separate column for the current city requirement, next to the state requirement, right next to the revised retention city requirement. So we can see, in one line, one gaze, it's kind of like comparing insurances, you know? Like, if you can get it all side-by-side, you can make a decision. So my request, I'd like to have those questions answered, please, if we could, or at least discussed among council. And I thank you very much for pulling this for more public, a more informed public, and more access to, for the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no more speakers. And we'll have our records manager, Thomas Schmitt, answer those questions. Thomas?
Is on. Okay. Good evening, Honorable, Honorable Deputy Mayor and Honorable Counsel. I'm Thomas Schmitt, the records manager with the City Clerk's Office. I'm joined here by our consultant, Diane Gladwell. We're going to answer these questions. And I did email Ms. Hammerschmidt. Her first question regarding the current retention schedule, it is available online, and I did email her a copy of that, so it is available to the public. And this item, this resolution, is to update that current retention schedule. Second, there, the second question is, how would passing this recommendation affect public access to information? This doesn't really change anything, because we are mandated to follow the Public Records Act, so there would be no change in access to public records. We'd follow the same procedures. Thirdly, the question is about why some records are kept longer than what's mandated by the state. We meet with the department directors, and sometimes they want to maintain records longer than is legally required for administrative or historical purposes. So the department could suggest, hey, I want an extra two years with these records. This document gets reviewed by the city attorney, and then it gets approved by the council. So I believe those were the questions. Did I answer them all? Which was the last one?
Email.
The emails.
The emails. So I'd like to answer the email questions.
Okay.
So let me introduce myself first. Okay? So... Good evening. My name is Diane Gladwell. I'm the President of Gladwell Governmental Services Incorporated. I've worked with over 200 cities in California doing records retention, so this is all I do every day. There is no legal requirement to keep emails for one year. That is not correct. Records are retained based upon the content of the record. So whether it's delivered by the US Mail, and it's a conference I can't go to because I can't afford to go to it, I can throw that away because the content is not substantive. And that's the terminology used by the California Supreme Court. The content is not substantive. I am not required to retain it for any particular period of time. Now, if it's a conference invitation that I really want to go to, I could hold on to it. Doesn't mean I throw it away right away. The law says, when it's no longer required, it can be retained. Now, for email, it's the same thing. If the email is, "I'm running late, where is the meeting? Let's go to lunch at McDonald's." The content is not substantive, and there is no legal mandate to retain it. If the content is, "My coworker's harassing me," now that becomes a harassment claim. It's always the content of the record. If it's a change order in an email, it's the change order retention. So the retention is always based on the content of the record, not how it comes in or what media the record is in. The city does have an email policy, and I'll let Thomas speak to that.
So, so we do have two policies. There is a council policy, Council Policy 144. I do have a copy here. This one is available on our website. And this outlines our policy on emails, emails in the vaulting system, and most notably, that staff is required to review their emails and determine if retention should be applied to them, and either print them out and put them with the file, or, you know, save them electronically. Let me see if I can fix that. There you go. Okay, perfect.
That's nice. It's all time for the optometrist.
So that's Policy 144. In addition, we have a administrative directive for computer use in the city, which everybody signs when they start working here, including vendors that are on our system. And it outlines the same principles that are in our council policy. Basically, the highlights are, expect no privacy on the email, and that you're required to review emails on a weekly basis and preserve them according to if they meet the standard That answers...
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Mullen to add his two cents here, please.
Very quick two cents. And Thomas and I have talked about, we, there have been trainings in the past on retention for email that my office has performed, and Thomas and I are going to be beginning those again, starting with the departments that probably utilize email the most, especially in interactions with the public. So those will be coming within the next month or so.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. There were, so the, so in the name of transparency, what is the current retention schedule? So basically 90 days, right? That was, that was the response to the question. She had very, three very specific questions.
I think her overall, she wanted to know the current retention for all of the retention schedule, and Thomas provided her that.
Okay.
And that is online, if anybody wants access to that. And that is the retention schedule we are currently asking to update.
And then she had a question about the state mandates, and before I make the motion, John, did you want to respond to that?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I've reviewed this at length. One of the reasons it took a little bit longer is because it was pending with me for so long, because I cross-referenced every single section that our consultant was citing to update our retention schedule. There are directors, and myself included, who want to keep documents a lot longer than the state requires us to. So our retention schedule is based upon the subject, you know, what the document represents, what kind of document is it? Then that determines how long you keep it. For example, I don't think we need to keep judgments in perpetuity, but I want them kept forever. So that's one type of document that we would want to have access to in the future. So our retention schedules are nor, are not shorter than any state statutory requirement. There are many cases where we've, other directors have asked for a longer period of retention.
Right. Okay, thank you. Move approval.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. So let's do item 18, please.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. Tracy Boland, Economic Development Manager. Tonight's request is to hear the public comment on the modification of the Tourism Marketing District. The funds received are, received by the city pass through to the Visit Oceanside Group, and the Board of Directors, which is made up of hoteliers and vacation rental owners, really manages how that funding is spent. This is the second meeting of the proposed modification. The first one happened April 24th, where you approved the resolution of intention to modify. The last meeting will occur on June 19th, at which time, any protests will be counted, and the resolution of modification can be adopted if protests count for less than 51% of the total assessment. The modification that's being proposed is to increase the self-assessment on the hotel motel groups to a 2.5% rate. The vacation rental businesses will remain at the 1.5% assessment. And with that, unless you have some more questions about this item, thank you very much.
Okay, that, that's great. Well, is there any public?
No public on this item.
So...
Could I? Oops, it was there. Thank you. I just, a quick question. Have you had any correspondence from businesses that would be impacted by this, between the last meeting and today? Either for or against?
We have had some correspondence from vacation rental owners, small ones, that did not understand it did not impact them.
Okay.
So, and we've communicated with them.
Thank you. And I understand this is an update to the council, and that at the next meeting, we'll be having a vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's no vote here. Thank you. Okay, how many speakers?
One speaker on item number 19.
Okay, let's hear. Yeah, that's going to take more than, so, one speaker on items not on the agenda?
Speakers on item number 25, off agenda items.
How many?
Seven.
My math says we can get pretty close, I think. So let's, let's do items not on the agenda, please.
Our, for item number 25, items off of the agenda, our first speaker is Kathleen Lippett, to be followed by Nabit, to be followed by Sanford Sherman.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kathleen Lippett. I'm a public health policy educator and practitioner. Respectfully, I would like to share some information that I hope will be considered regarding the marijuana commercialization soon to come. I hope that you will protect the residents of Oceanside by ensuring that certified marijuana product testing labs are in place before commercial marijuana operator operations come online. California has made tremendous strides with tobacco smoking, especially among youth. However, these successes are now being undermined. Major tobacco conglomerates are now cashing in on marijuana. They own a large stake in Juul, an offshoot of a marijuana vaping company at the root of today's youth vaping epidemic. Many teens don't even know they're vaping nicotine, and due to their mistaken perception that marijuana is a harmless and even ther, and even therapeutic, they're also vaping marijuana. With up to 99.9% potency, the genetically engineered marijuana of today bears no resemblance to that of the 1% to 3% THC in the 1960s to 70s. The still-developing teen brain is put at risk by extremely potent THC, which exposes them to carcinogens and can raise the risk of a first episode of psychosis by fivefold. Moreover, these products have been found to be contaminated with insecticides, herbicides, lead, virus, bacteria, et cetera. There are no certified testing labs in San Diego County at this time, and the Bureau of Cannabis Control cannot be counted on to oversee, test, or enforce against problematic operators. They are overwhelmed, understaffed, and do not have the enforcement capacity necessary. That will leave the residents of cities like Oceanside at risk. To protect your citizens from contaminated products, certified testing labs need to be in place before marijuana products come online. A protocol for survey, surveilling, inspecting, and enforcing would have to be developed. I wonder also if the city is prepared to deal with the blight of marijuana billboards that will pop up throughout your city, signed twirlers and marijuana-wrapped RVs that will be carrying marijuana-using young people around the city and then back to their cars to get in and drive home on the streets. I hope you will protect your existing community-friendly businesses, churches, youth-serving organizations, treatment, and recovery centers that might find themselves in the path of a marijuana project applicant. These entities are often displaced by savvy marijuana lawyers who will exploit every weakness and loophole in the city codes. These entities do not have the deep pockets like marijuana producers do. California's... do. California is already producing eight to twelve times more product than the state consumes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nabit, to be followed by Sanford Sherman.
Good evening, council. My name is Aaron. I go by the name Aaron Nabit. It's off-agenda topic is in regards to the, excuse me. First, let me state that I am a prior service military DOD, and this topic is in regards to the drive-in theater property inland Oceanside. I'd like to take the opportunity to explore the possibilities of the development project that would consider construction of the inland Oceanside drive-in swap meet existing property. At this time, the project would involve the redevelopment of this valuable Oceanside property. The redevelopment could become a joint venture between the county and city of Oceanside. The venture would stimulate, excuse me, would stimulate, these glasses are not doing me any good, stimulate the economy, generating revenue for the Oceanside community and its surrounding businesses, as well as it would provide to the public job opportunities for employment. Our proposal for a city of Oceanside is a quarter-mile Speedway. This Speedway would incorporate two safety tracks that would include stadium seating and infield area, as well as concessions. The proposal for an enter, for this type of entertainment would bring to Oceanside an opportunity to host guests from a wide variety of locations. I encourage Oceanside to consider these events off-season during the months of September and October, perhaps incorporating an Oktoberfest, and allow our prestigious city to host an annual event to Southern California, and not to conflict with other San Diego annual events. This continue, excuse me, this will allow for long-term guests to San Diego to continue to enjoy our fine city, drawing their patronage to our, to Oceanside Speedways henceforth, creating revenue for San Diego City of Oceanside. Consider the construction costs of such a venture. Builders and developers alike, in conjunction with county and city, could expect large profit margins and expenses could be offset by advertising that would be granted to the city and project developers and development companies on site. Hotel lodging and restaurants also would provide extended revenues to Oceanside during what we consider an influx of visitors during an off-season. Vending and swap meets businesses could regulate the center of the infield when the Speedway is not being designated for specific use of Speedway events. This project would require at least two quarter-mile tracks on opposite sides of the infield. Insurance liabilities minimized if safety tracks were designed and designated to be posted.
Sir, we gotta wrap it up.
Three minutes, I believe it. Thank you for your time, council.
Sure.
And thank you for considering the property project in Oceanside inland property. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Sanford Sherman, to be followed by Ann Force, to be followed by Christine Gorman. And Mr. Sherman has a video.
A video, a video from Dean Baker, M.D., Department of Public Health, UC Irvine. He is speaking about pesticides and the negative impact on children and the lack of regulation of pesticides.
Is it under three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could we restart it just?
Children are developing rapidly and pesticides, scientific research on the effects of pesticide exposure during the in-utero period or gestational period linked exposure to pesticides to later childhood cancers. Children are developing rapidly, and pesticides and other chemicals can interfere with that development. Chemicals that can get into the body can crash the blood-brain barrier, which is not completely protected, so it can get to the, to the brain. The other fact is that children are more susceptible because they're actually exposed more. Children crawl around on the ground. They have more hand-to-mouth behaviors. So, they're actually more exposed. They get more into the body. They're more susceptible. There's been a body of research, they've shown a whole range of outcomes. Some lower IQ among children who are exposed gestationally or shortly after birth, and behavioral development such as ADHD. And so, they've shown associations with leukemia and with brain tumors with pesticide exposures in children. Pesticides are designed to kill. They have many different mechanisms of being toxic. While children, we've talked about, are more susceptible, adults are also going to be affected with exposure to the pesticides. With pets, in many ways, they also have behaviors like, like young children that can increase their exposure. The regulatory structure in the United States has a long, sad history. And so, for many of the pesticides that are most commonly used out there, they had almost no testing. Pesticides shouldn't ever have been considered safe, because the whole point of pesticides is to kill. So, pesticides have always been selected because they were toxic. Also, within the spectrum of pesticides, we've had histories where a pesticide like DDT was used extremely widely because it was considered essentially non-toxic. And as we know, it's been associated with cancer, devastating impact on the environment. In fact, was eventually banned. So, what we've been talking about is really, what are the hazards of pesticides? What are the concerns about pesticides? What can we do with this information? And what we should do with this information is we should take a more health-protective approach to our environment. So, we all love the environment of Irvine, but we want Irvine to be a truly safe and healthful city. And the important thing to understand is that there are options. It's, it's not that you have to heavily use pesticides in order to maintain the, the postcard picture-perfect Irvine that we know and take care of our environment.
Our next speaker is Ann Force, to be followed by Christine Gorman, to be followed by Nick Ritchie.
Hi, I'm here to support the idea to, of having the city of Oceanside pass an ordinance for non-toxic integrated pesticide management. I have a home in the Ocean Hills community, and they created a similar policy five years ago. They have cut their pesticide and chemical use in half since then, and I think they've also cut the cost and their liability in half. I want to show you the notice of application of herbicide that, that the city of Oceanside has on its website. It says that six different chemicals may be sprayed from seven AM to three PM, Monday through Friday. And there's no, they're not telling you where, and they're not telling you why, but in Ocean Hills. They give you the location, like, is it the golf course? Is it the, the green areas? Is it front yards and so on? And they only do it for one week at a time. So, if you want to, you can avoid being there. You can avoid these areas that are being sprayed, and you can know what the chemicals are doing and what impact they have. But, the notice, in contrast, the city of Oceanside notice does not give anyone the opportunity to avoid being sprayed. There's no safety allowed by this notice. It's just, says monthly, and all these things will be used. And then I wanted to show a spray sheet from January second, and this person is spraying Speed Zone at the women's club. He's not wearing gloves, which are required when you use Speed Zone. And, like, it, it only takes thirty seconds for a chemical on the skin to get into the blood system. And so, it just seems like, if we had a policy of not using poisonous chemicals, we won't have to worry about liability. And I think tourists would especially rejoice if Oceanside were a non-toxic neighborhood city. And thank you for your service to our community.
Next speaker, Christine Gorman, to be followed by Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Feller and council members. I put this up here because you'll probably be hearing a lot about IPM, and then another more specific focus on IPM. Oh, IPM is Integrated Pest Management. There are many cities across the country and throughout California that have such policies in place, and the definition of IPM, it's an ecosystem-based strategy that focuses on long-term prevention of pests or their damage, through a combination of techniques such as biological control, habitat manipulation, modification of cultural practices, and use of resistant varieties. The list goes on, but it's, it's a comprehensive management plan, a written policy. Now, NTES IPM, that is emphasizing specifically non-toxic, environmentally sensitive, integrated pest management. And I'd like to ask that you take action to have the city adopt an ordinance. And it starts by the have to start writing, you know, a draft policy that then could be brought back to city council. In some cases, pesticides are be, being used for cosmetic purposes, and I think there should be some rethinking about that, not just about the people doing the spraying, but even about, you know, citizens. Rethink, you know, rethink pretty. Dandelions in the lawn used to be the norm many years ago. People didn't think that they had to get some poison to eradicate dandelions from their lawn. And so, some of this policy, you could eliminate a lot of pesticides simply by taking a close look and, and rethinking. And for instance, there's a pesticide that's, an herbicide, well, pesticide, herbicide, I meant to say, are the same thing. Herbicides are included under the larger category pesticide. And for example, the city uses an herbicide to control growth on certain bushes. Well, why not either just let it grow, or prune it, or better yet, just plant something different that you're not gonna have to go in and do growth control by spraying poisons? So, I would really like to see if, move ahead in developing such a policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt. Is that the last one?
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council members, city attorney. When will the final decision be made about Brother Benno's CUP? Nearly six months have passed and nothing yet. The people and businesses of Oceanside want nothing less than accountability from Benno's, and they deserve it. Why won't the city enforce existing ordinances concerning the illegal use of shopping carts? Giving businesses the option to place lock boots on their carts or pay for their cart retrieval is not successful. Frazier Markets has lock boots on their carts, and you never see their carts in the river, lagoon, creek, on the beach, in bushes, on sidewalks, in yards, on street corners, in the street, clogging bus stops, or being used to transport bicycle parts, household goods illegally. Please exercise the political will to assertively deal with this problem. Require all businesses that use shopping carts to employ the locking boot system on their carts. This action will directly improve the quality of life for Oceanside residents. Why does the city put our lives and property at risk by allowing transients to live in the San Luis River, the San Luis Rey River? In two thousand and eighteen, we had one hundred fires set by the transients, yet the city does the minimum in dealing with this. Your stated reasons are, oh, it's Army Corps of Engineers, has partial jurisdiction, and some of the riverbed is privately owned. Why do you ignore this glaring risk? Please aggressively pursue these two entities for permission to mitigate any and all fire danger. If you all vote yes for Measure X-funded homeless services you presented April seventeenth, then you must have a measurable goal and accountability of recipients of these services. If you do not, you will continue the enablement and destruction of those you desire to help and waste taxpayer dollars in, as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good evening, Honorable Deputy Mayor and council members. Arlene Hammerschmidt, twenty-three ninety Ivy Road in Fire Mountain. I want, this is really toward informing our public and, and informed electorate. Everything I'm going to share with you tonight is online, available, if one had time, to investigate it and find it. The fact is, most of our residents are working their tails off, two jobs plus per household, and don't have time to sit down and find this stuff out. So, this is just a timeline. It's all legal, and I'm not gonna make any comment about it except factual. On January twenty-fourth of two thousand and eighteen, the council appointed our mayor, Mayor Weiss. On April eighteenth of two thousand and eighteen, our newly-appointed Mayor Weiss was the headliner for a fundraiser for Build San Diego PAC, the Building Industry Association of San Diego County. That was in April. On May twenty-second of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and eighteen, there was another fundraiser for Build San Diego PAC in Oceanside, and the headliner was our appointed mayor. I wanted to let you know, and let the public know, that right now, this same PAC is recruiting members to fill seats at the next council meeting for the hearing on NRF. And here's that ad. I love the way it's psychologically put together to motivate. I was a coach. I understand motivation. At a time when the builder developer is looking to get their project approved at Planning Commission or in or city council, you are right there helping with that effort. In turn, a special connection is made with that builder developer. I thank you for your time, public. Keep paying attention. To be continued.
There are no more speakers.
Apologize. Thank you. Can I have one moment? So, would you let them know that item twenty is not on the agenda for today, and we'll, and then we'll go to twenty-one?
Item number twenty has been continued to two o'clock PM on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
Item number 20 has been continued to 2:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 29th, 2019. Item 21 is an adoption of a resolution approving a conditional use permit and a waiver of locational criteria to allow massage establishment within existing approximately 1,800 square foot commercial tenant space located at 1816 Oceanside Boulevard, Suite B, Villa Massage, applicant Lingao LLC.
In the hearing with disclosures, start with you. Nothing, I had staff as well as the, I've been by the site.
Some communications from members of the public.
Who's presenting? Stephanie, okay.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. Before I begin my presentation, I will be distributing some additional materials. All right, my name is Stephanie Cervantes. I will be presenting conditional use permit 18-00022 and waiver of locational requirements for Villa Massage at 1816 Oceanside Boulevard, Suite B. At this time, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit and waiver of locational criteria to allow massage establishment within an existing approximately 1,800 square foot commercial tenant space located at 1816 Oceanside Boulevard, Suite B. The project's site is within the Fraser Farms Market Center and is so in special commercial highway oriented. The site is surrounded by a variety of commercial, retail, and service businesses to the west and east, industrial uses to the south, and a golf course to the north. The project proposes a new massage establishment within the existing tenant space. The suite is approximately 1,800 square feet and will accommodate nine massage rooms. The business will provide therapeutic treatments. The project is also requesting a waiver of the locational requirements as there are four other regulated uses within a thousand foot radius of the site. There is a payday advance establishment, a liquor store, a tobacco establishment, and a bar within the radius. The project complies with the general plans, zoning ordinance, and municipal code. While the, the site is within a thousand feet of other regulated uses, those uses are in separate shopping centers roughly 900 feet away, and none of those uses include a massage establishment. The business will operate completely indoors and will add another service type to the existing center. The project is required to obtain a City of Oceanside business license, and the business license division will verify compliance with state licensing requirements. On March 25th of this year, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the project with a five to one vote. The no vote was due to dissatisfaction with the noticing of the project, typos on the application, and the prevalence of homelessness in the area. There was also four requests to speak at that hearing. The comments were of opposition to the type of use, the proposed location, and the potential danger or nuisance associated with the type of business. There is also a modification to condition number 12 of the Planning Commission resolution per request of the Oceanside Police Department. The condition now reads, "This conditional use permit may be called for review by the Planning Commission if complaints filed and verified are valid by the Code Enforcement Office and/or Police Department concerning the violation of any of the approved conditions or assumptions made by the application." At this time, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the city council confirm issuance of a Class 1 categorical exemption per sequa and approve a conditional use permit and waiver of locational requirements for the proposed massage establishment at 1816 Oceanside Boulevard, Suite B. I am available for questions as well as the representative of the project.
Thank you, Stephanie. We have
We have three speakers on the side.
The applicant gets a chance to speak if they so wish.
Good evening, city council, mayor, and city manager. Basically, we were here at the Planning Commission. I just want to clarify a few things in that the, the no vote was basically the, the one Planning Commission person felt that the, the different tenants within the shopping center were not in agreement with this. But what you were handed was basically a signed tenant list, basically that they basically all approved of the project, so signed by each one of the tenants in there. And we, that's, we were surprised when we heard that because the, we had actually the manager of the shopping center right here, and he was surprised to hear that as well because he had talked to all the different tenants that were in agreement with that. Also, part of the negative that came was that was right after, as you recall, the massage parlor incidents in Florida. And there was a, there was actually a reference made to that a massage parlor, the massage parlor that I'm representing would be something like the one in Florida. And I said, that's not fair to say that, you know, every massage parlor, you know, in the country is like what went on in Florida, you know, a month or so ago. So anyway, I would like the owner of the massage parlor to come to share a little bit of how he wants to run it and kind of the, what his, his dream of what this is and how it's to serve the community. So, Jack?
Okay. Good evening, council members. I'm the son of the, the business owner Lingao. My mom, she's, she's a good therapist, and she's also entrepreneur. She has a good background for past business. She had been doing business in Temecula, opened a store for three and a half years, and sold the business to take care of her, her parents. And right now, she's back to China already because her, her, her father went to the hospital. She went, because it's take too long, and she had to go back two months to take care of her father. So as my mom, my mom, she's, she take care of the business. She's very responsibility, responsible person. Every people she hear must have the, a massage therapy license, must be licensed. And she pay out tax with a W-2 as an employee. So, you know, some people have maybe heard about the news about the, the things happening in Florida. But I don't think it's not a, I think it's not a case because every people is different. Every people doing business different. It can't judge, you know, people, you know, doing massages or being illegal. So that's, that's what I need to say.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't your mom sell her business in, in Temecula? And it was very successful, and it's still running?
Yeah, he did. He said that.
This is the owner, the manager of the shopping center?
Okay, very good.
Hello, council members. My name's Joshua Shelton. I represent the trust that currently runs the Fraser Farms Market Center. And you may not be aware that this entire shopping center is entrusted to UCSD School of Alternative Medicine. All proceeds that, and profits that come from that center go back into a trust that goes into alternative medicine research. We are highly committed to the community. Mr. Krupp, the former owner, passed away about three years ago. He entrusted the property to UCSD. We have a very holistic approach in that market center. As you might see, we struggle with things every day. Our tenants struggle. We struggle with vacancies there that we've been trying to fill. We've set aside nearly a year towards this process because we believe in this massage therapist. We've reviewed the financials, we've reviewed her previous locations. We feel it's in harmony with the Fraser Farms Market, which is a holistic market. We feel it's in harmony with the yoga center that we have. And we're looking forward to working a deal with bringing UCSD School of Alternative Medicine into one of our larger vacant buildings there. So we feel this is in harmony with a lot of our future plans. And we ask that you seriously consider this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And
The speakers already spoke.
Okay, it is a public hearing, so if there are anybody that in, within the building that wish to speak regarding this subject, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. You know, I really appreciate the comments.
I'm not. I really appreciate the comments by the representative for the owner, the, the trust, because that certainly has added to my sense of whether or not this is a, we should grant the waiver for adult use. You know, I'm, I think that a lot of folks in the community, when they first hear adult use, they don't, they don't think in terms of alternative medicine. And so that's certainly something that we are entrusted. These are the kind of decisions that we're entrusted to do. And certainly, Oceanside is becoming more and more of a popular place to be. And so I very much appreciate what you're doing in, in the shopping center. Fraser Farms is a very important business in the community. You know, we lost Ralph's, and so in order to get, you know, besides, what's the other store there? Fraser Farms. Fraser Farms really does bring a lot of really fresh vegetables, organics, and things of that kind, including the, the shop inside that has alternative type medicine that are over the counter type things. So I was contacted by a couple of people who use the yoga business, and they were actually looking forward to this. So certainly, that, those are the communications that I received. So I'm gonna, and, and of course, the Planning Commission heard this, and it sounds like only one person felt that perhaps it was not an appropriate use of the waiver. But again, I, I feel that the applicants have presented a good, good reason why in this, in this instance, and this is on a case by case basis, of course. So I'm going to go ahead and move adoption of the resolution approving the conditional use permit. And wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to wait a minute until Councilmember Rodriguez gets back. Yeah, I, I think let's just take a break for a couple of minutes. Give us five minutes, that'll give him a chance to get back.